I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the first item of business is the vote on the provisional budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve it, but with a couple of comments, if I may, all should I wait for a second?
I'll tell you what, we'll take a second and then discussion.
Second.
I am, I am. And I will help with the motion, go ahead, please.
It's just the fact that what we see on the yellow, on this long yellow sheet, it took much effort on the part of the departments, the administration, and obviously, you know, the finance department as well. And to say the least, we spent three days last week working through this. So obviously, very proud to see this budget going forward.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Just want to echo Councilman Texera's statements. I think this budget not only supports the school system, which we all agree education is very important, knowledge is power. I think this budget also includes a lot of areas where the town is going to, you know, keep moving forward in the right ways with the infrastructure and making sure that we're properly funding our different department heads so they can move forward. So I just think it's a very good budget and it was well done. And I want to thank the administrator and his team and all the department heads for all your hard work. We know how much you put into this and also all my colleagues here. I know you guys put in a lot of time and Chairman, you led us through this. So my hat's off to you guys for putting in the time and looking at all these line items. It's not easy. So, thank you.
I just want to follow up with what everybody else has been saying. It's been an absolute pleasure to go through this with everybody again. It never gets old to go through these budgets with a fine tooth comb. I see a lot of excellent things here, support for schools, public safety, libraries, recreation, so that our kids can be outdoors and playing. So a lot of positive things here. And again, it was an absolute pleasure to work with everybody on this.
Any other discussion? So I'm going to take Tony's motion and Aaron's second, thank you, and just add to that for just a moment. April 15th is the public hearing. That's your opportunity as the public to come and talk about, you see something in this budget that you want to have discussion on, whether it's to say, my goodness, what a great job, or my goodness, I'd like to see some improvement here, and this is what I'm proposing. That is what the public hearing is for. So if that's something that interests you, and may I say something, if this looks scary, it is. And my colleagues pointed out that there were three full evenings, and I was actually just going to compliment my colleagues also, is that we had a meeting on Monday at 6:30, we had a meeting on Tuesday at 6:30, we had a meeting on Wednesday at 6:30, we had a meeting on Thursday at 6:30. And that pales in comparison to the efforts given by our department heads and the administrator to bring this council a budget that we could generally say yes to, in fact, almost all say yes to. That's a big deal. Couple of reasons for that. If you look at other communities, the animosity, the tension, the friction between colleagues on the council, between positions like the administrators or the mayor is palatable. It is real, and it is a waste of time. This is the opposite. Our, my colleagues and I will disagree with each other. It's really important, right? But we do it respectfully. And at the end of the day, whatever the decision the council as a whole makes, we move forward on. So a couple of things in this budget. One is there was a lot of money that we used to borrow for capital. Capital example would be paving roads, right? Big dollars, right? Like replacing things like a fire truck. All very important things, right? But we would borrow that money. We are borrowing much and much less. The benefit, of course, to the public is that we're not paying interest to do that. Interest rates have gone up very, very high compared to where they were. You're feeling it with with interest rates. If you want to borrow money, whether it's for a house or otherwise, town feels the same thing. So we're doing less of that. But as you look around this community, you'll see a lot of things getting done. Roads are being paved, and that's just one obvious one. There are so many more things that sidewalks are being fixed. And am I touting our own horn? Absolutely not. That's our responsibility. That's what we're supposed to do. But unlike other communities, I'm not pointing out one in particular, too, but we are actually getting it done. That's a pride point for you. That's a pride point for us. We take this seriously. We look through this budget and we try to find pennies. Pennies on the dollar make a huge difference to your tax rate. So my colleagues and I, department heads and the administrator took time, effort, and energy. I don't leave out the clerk because hers is a different massive responsibility, making sure things are advertised correctly, making sure that things are captured correctly so we can go through these things and that we don't go back and say, oops, I made a mistake on this or that. So a lot of effort and energy. It is worth the extra moment I just took and my colleagues took. We say again, thank you to everyone that put this together. And I say thank you to my colleagues for your efforts and energies. It does not go unnoticed. So the motion, and it was seconded, motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, is to vote on the provisional budget for 2425 with Schedule A, including $62,656,756. Schedule B, including $1,399,000. That's included in Schedule A. And then Schedule C, $7,093,845, with a total of $69,750,601. And I'll say it again, public hearing is on April 5th. Interesting day to do that, isn't that? Yeah, it's not lost on us either. Is there any other discussion from the council?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I believe these will be available right here in the town hall if anybody wishes to pick one up. So if you think, okay, how can I get that big yellow sheet, you can stop by town hall and help yourself to one.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes, and this is for the town council meeting of February 28, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, sorry, Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? One moment. Any discussion from the council? You can on April 15th, and we wish you that. We've already gone past it. I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. What did I say? No, not on this. Okay. Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2024-5, Chapter 16 to Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5, to stopping, standing, and parking. And this is to add a no, a one, no parking space adjacent to driveway at 45 Congregational Street. Second reading?
Make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion?
If I may just take a brief opportunity here, and I missed it early on, I just want to thank you, Melissa, for the pagination of this packet. Now that you've paginated, it's a much easier, I missed it before, I'm sorry. But yesterday, for some reason, I'm going through it, and it's, okay, so thank you on that.
You're very welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance 2024-6, Chapter 27, Article 1, Taxation, Section 27-7. And this is for the exemption of person over age of 65 years and for the entitlements and amounts. This is second reading.
Make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C3. This is ordinance 2024-7, Chapter 27 to Taxation, Section 27-9, for entitlements and amounts. This is for the amendments to the hardship exemption. Second reading?
Make a motion that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C4. This is ordinance 2024-8 for Chapter 8, Boats, Docks, and Waterways, Section 8-71. This is for insurance requirements for Town Marina. First reading?
Make a motion that we consider this the first reading, or constitute first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that this constitutes first reading. Any discussion?
Going back to the minutes in the, oh, yeah, sorry. I was going back to the minutes just to make sure that it was captured. But there's a big, a lot of discussion last, last meeting when this was brought up. And there was discussion about phasing it in with the liability with the, with the recreational boater and not, and then phasing it in later on. I don't know if that would be a policy piece or if that would be like procedures. But I really, as I was talking about like the last meeting, I don't see any materials to talk about like where we are in relation to fishermen and the fish people that, you know, work the water. And we've always made a big issue and tried really to carefully make sure we don't disturb that business. It's going down in size than it used to be, but that we make sure that the people who fish for a living, whether shell fishing or fishing, aren't forced out. And I think this liability was raised the last time that either they can't get insurance because their boats may be too old, there may be other issues, or that they can, they've tried, et cetera. And what I asked for, and I was trying to figure out, like, how come it wasn't in the packet? And maybe it's because it wasn't clearly asked, but I went through to make sure it was referenced in the minutes. I wanted to know, I think we're lacking information, like how many people, I think you said, I think we said at the last meeting, there was something like 25 commercial fishermen, approximately. Well, how many of those people already have liability insurance? How many have tried and been rejected repeatedly because of something that they really can't control? And, you know, what are the limitations? I don't know if any of the, this is first reading, so I'm talking a lot. Maybe I should be talking so much about it. But I have a hard time supporting this in this current form. And I don't intend to support it. I want to see that documentation. I also want to see if we're going to phase it in with the, you know, recreational boater. I mean, I think every recreational boater that uses our docks are using, I mean, I think if you're going to take out a loan or whatever to get a boat, I don't have a boat, you kind of probably need liability insurance, just like you have for your automobile. So I'm disappointed not to see that further information. And I don't know if, I'm hoping that, you know, some of them will come forward and talk more maybe at the second reading when, when we have the, that ability. Because we only heard, I think, at that last meeting, like, from one person. And I want to make sure they all know this is out there as well.
I think Councilwoman Perella, this came up, and when we were trying to determine the number of days, we talked about the 30 days after the ordinance went into effect that would affect, you know, the non-commercial. But we decided on 180 days to phase commercial because it would give them enough time to be able to work with the harbor master, look at different rates, look at polling rates, look at different carriers, liabilities, that type of thing. So I know when we were kind of formulating, going back and forth, we did, we did discuss that. So that's the differential on the days and the ordinance.
I understand that. I sort of missed that little sentence, but it doesn't negate the fact that I, that you, that I, I need to have more information, like how many people are actually affected? I mean, if it's 25 people and we have five of them that can't get liability insurance, it's different than if there's 25 people that have tried and can't get it. And I use the example, you know, there's a lot of examples that we have in our own lives that we can't get. Like, I mean, it's very hard. Like, I have an old house and one floor of it is knob and tube wiring still. I can't get any insurance except by one writer. You know, there's no insurance out there except the joint, the Massachusetts-Rhode Island Joint Finance, whatever it's called, association. And that's like the ones who will do your house if you're in a flood zone, et cetera. So I pay a lot, a lot of money for it. And it doesn't mean that people aren't trying. It doesn't mean that they aren't keeping their stuff up or anything like that. So I would like that information. And I think it would be fairly simple with such a small number to survey these folks. And I don't know, I'll survey in my stomach when he wants to give me the list of who they are. I can do it myself.
Well, the good news is the harbor master is here tonight. So I think he's heard you loud and clear, right, Greg? Maybe we can work on getting some of that information?
I thought it was pretty clear at the last meeting, and yet I still don't have the information, so.
Good evening.
Good evening. John McDonald, who was here last meeting, one of the commercial fishermen, he was doing that, that work, but he didn't think he had to come tonight with that information. I think he was planning on coming.
At our second reading? Okay.
But we have the harbor commission meeting on Monday, so I'll see if I can get some answers.
Could you like maybe send it out to us if he has it done, maybe send us the information so we can at least look at it in advance?
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Greg, if you could go through the clerk on that, please?
I will.
That way it's disseminated correctly.
No problem.
Councilman Perella is correct that this did come up at that last meeting, but I don't recall that we said specifically who should garner that information.
John came the next day. We provided him the list of all the commercial fishermen on the dock and on the bulkheads throughout town. And he was taking that information, working with everybody on that.
So we should expect that at the next meeting?
You will have it. Hopefully, I'll have it to you next week.
Outstanding. So this is, thank you. So this is first reading, as Councilman Perella pointed out. Typically, what, we don't have discussion about it, but this is appropriate discussion because it was looking for additional information. We don't like to discuss and then re-discuss, if you will. But that is not the case here. This was asking for information. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Well, I'm not going to abstain on this right now because I'm not comfortable with not having that information and moving forward.
Do we know it?
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C5. This is ordinance 2024-9, Chapter 17, Article 2, to the alcoholic beverage establishments in Section 17-82. And this is to decrease the number of B-limited licenses from eight to seven and increase the number of BV licenses from 31 to 32. First reading?
I move that we constitute this first reading. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that this constitutes first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is the Bristol Merchant Association. This is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment licenses, and this is per the 2024 event schedule.
Please send all the positive recommendations. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion?
Yes, just referring to page 67 of our packet there. The, it was, let's see, there's a couple of things. One in particular was the Director Public Works makes reference to, what do you call, the recyclables, you know, to make sure that they follow through and there's appropriate containers for that. So I would, as well as the, some of the other recommendations, you know, from the other department heads to make sure they're in compliance.
Mr. Administrator, could you, so, Tony, that's a great point. I was actually speaking with the administrator a little bit earlier today.
It's just a part, if the motion could also include trash management, that they have somebody on staff there that can at least empty the barrels so we don't have to have somebody come in. We pick up the trash in the morning, they usually set it aside. But during the events, often when they're, when they're busy, the trash barrels overflow on State Street. So if they could manage their refuse, it would be helpful.
Thank you for bringing that up because you are so correct. I remember last year, you know, a couple of times where there were barrels that were overfall, you know, overfilled. And obviously, they were looking for somebody else as well. We're at the arrangements. So good point. Thank you.
Can I take that as an amended motion?
Yes.
Outstanding. Mary, can I take that as an amended second? Outstanding. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D2. This is Tracy Anthony, Doing Business for Clement's Marketplace. This is a request for vitroling license.
I make a motion that we approve it. Second.
We have motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion? Is Tracy here?
Yes.
Would you like a moment? That you weren't expecting? You're welcome. That's okay. You strike me as an ad lib well person.
I think I can wing it.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My address in town or my?
Your, your personal address.
Tracy Anthony, 25 Brenton Road, Swansea, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we often give a, an opportunity for a 30-second commercial.
30? That's gonna be tough.
See, I told you we're great at that.
No, I'm, I and, and my team are really looking forward to getting in there and fixing the place up a little bit and reopening hopefully very soon. So, you know, depending on all the licensing and approvals and everything that we need to get going. But we're excited. I mean, it's only over the bridge, so we're very familiar with the town. And, you know, it's kind of a hop, skip, and a jump from our other place. So we're really excited about it.
When do you see the transition complete?
When do I hope to? Or when? I'd love to be in there the first week of May, but, you know, or open the first week of May.
And Tracy, what's the name of your place? I think everybody knows, but you never mentioned it.
Clement's Marketplace.
I noticed that for Bristol, you're given a different name, Trail Bristol?
They're different corporations.
Oh, okay. So that's what that is.
Yeah, Doing Business, Clement's Market, yes.
Understood.
I think, I think everything I've seen online and everything I know from even myself, I go there a lot, the Portsmouth one. I think it's like people are very excited about having you come to town. So, yeah, I think it's going to be a great fit.
Well, we feel the same way, too, because Bristol's a wonderful community. Portsmouth is a wonderful community. You know, they're, they're very similar in a lot of ways. So we're really excited about it.
So taking a moment, obviously, Ciabatta was a big part of the community for many, many years.
24.
20?
Wow, 24, I remember going there, ribbon cutting, wow.
I would not have said that long, but thank you for saying that. So a big part of the community for many years, both the, the facility itself and the employees that have been there, right? So, so this town is appreciated, having a wonderful choice there, and look forward to the new choice, or it seems to be in a moment that we look forward to.
Well, we have, and there are, there are many people, several people that have wanted to stay on with us. So they like the location, they, some of them live very close to it. So we, you know, we were fortunate to be able to hire them.
Outstanding.
Are you staying in the same footprint of the current supermarket? Or are you going to take that Santana? It used to be like a bank next door. You guys?
I was told there was a bank coming in there.
Oh, there is? Okay, great.
I did ask for it, but.
Having the same, like, takeout and food, that product that you, you know, like food, cooked food that you have in Portsmouth and Bristol as well?
Yes, the, the facility is a little bit different space-wise, so we're going to have to work into it a little bit. You know, the kitchen, deli, and bakery are all in one area, and we're pretty separated in the other store and have a lot more space. But we're going to bring as much as we can and make modifications as we go along to be able to bring our full plethora with us, so.
Well, thank you for choosing Bristol, and we're excited to have you here.
Thank you. I mean, I really commend your business, too, for having all the kids that, you have so many teens and so many people working your registers, and you have baggers and a checkout person. And I do see, like, when I've gone in there, you do provide, I think, scholarships for the kids, or you highlight them, a shout out, like the ones who are graduating and things like that. I think that's terrific. I think that's really terrific. So hopefully, some of that will transfer over here as well.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Will I be able to pick up my Portuguese dry figs? Yeah?
We are keeping a lot of that product. Obviously, there's, you know, people are wanting, they don't want us to get rid of all of it, and we don't want to either. Fortunately, Ciabatta has an import company in New Bedford, and that's who supplies it. So.
And out of New Jersey.
A little bit, yeah.
You're gonna be okay, Tony.
You're gonna make it.
Between the dry figs and the sardines, I don't know.
Dry figs, but it.
I didn't see you write that down, so.
No, obviously, you're much aware of the composition of the community, you know, the large population here in the area, Portuguese descent, so.
Well, Ciabatta was kind enough to share their information with us so that we could see what items sold the best. And we don't want to eliminate the items that people are looking for.
As my colleagues have already pointed out, Mary, in particular, about your staff, and this is not a reflection of anything else, just your staff, not a comparison, but the men and women, the, I guess, men and women that work there are outstanding. My wife and I will shop there periodically, and they is, they're very kind all the time. Even when I come in with silly questions, they're very kind all the time. So is this what I'm looking for, kind of thing? So, any other discussion from the council?
Just wish the best.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D3. This is Dewolf Tavern Annual Oyster Festival for July 21st, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is a request for a dancing and entertainment license, an extension of the one-day liquor license, and placement for two banners.
I make a motion that we approve it, with the understanding to follow all the regulations.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion?
I just wanted to mention that Dewolf Tavern, my name is Sherry Rego, I work over, I do events there.
Could you state your, you just stated your name and your address for the record?
My address is One Meadow Crest Drive, Riverside, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Dewolf Tavern is very generous in the community and by offering charitable donations. So the Oyster Fest, which will be held on Sunday, July 21, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., will be held outside of Dewolf Tavern. This year, we are sponsoring child and family services. So what we do is we raise the money and we pay whatever bills that, you know, comes from that. We have police duty, fire duty, and I've already contacted them. And whatever's left, we give to the charitable donation. Si is very generous in that aspect, so I wanted to let you all know about that. Our hope is $10,000 to give to the child and family services of Rhode Island.
Sherry, is this the first time you've been back since the pandemic with the Oyster Festival?
I believe it is. I just started over at Dewolf in November. I've been in the industry for over 30 years, so I'm looking forward to it.
Well, welcome back. It was, it was always one of my favorite events. It was always on Father's Day. And so I would always tell my family, for Father's Day, I want to go to the Oyster Festival.
Unfortunately, we have a wedding on Father's Day, so I said, well, July 21st is closest to Oyster.
Every day is Father's Day in my house.
I actually think that July 21st might be a better, I mean, there's a lot going on in June with graduations and weddings and, you know, and Fourth of July stuff. And after the Fourth of July, things kind of die down a little bit. So I think it's good to have this event. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I'm looking so forward to it, I really am. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. Any other questions?
No, I just think it's a worthy cause. It's great.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Got one more for you.
The next item on the agenda is C4. This is Dewolf Tavern, 259 Dame Street. This is a request for mobile food establishment event permit for the annual Oyster Festival for July 21st, 2024.
I'm actually just surprised about the food truck. I mean, it's fine, you know, like, there's so many restaurants right in that area that you feel that there's a need for a food truck?
The food trucks that we'll have are beverage trucks, like Dell's Lemonade, Raisin's Ice Cream. Those are the food trucks that we are hoping to have.
Okay, so it's not going to be regular food food?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, belly from us.
And I thought, wow, there's so many restaurants right there.
You know, do we call them drink trucks? I don't know. They, they consider themselves as food trucks.
What's this council's plan?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? I'll just take a moment and say, reiterate what you said, is that Dewolf and Si in particular is an important part of the community and has been for quite a long time, and it gives back. And so I can actually say the same as I just said about staff. and has been for quite a long time and it gives back. Uh, and so I can actually say the same as I just said about staff at Clements is outstanding.
Thank you.
And an important part of the community. Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm like an old lady. I'm like, who's gonna hire me at my age, right? And he took a shot. So he's a great man.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D five. This is Rosa Piva for St. Elizabeth's Church, 577 Wood Street. And this is a request for the one day dancing and entertainment license for the live auction on May 18th, 2024, from 5:30 to 11:00 PM.
Based on the, you recommend, uh, positive recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D six. This is Rosa Piva for St. Elizabeth's Church, 577 Wood Street. This is a request for one day dancing and entertainment licenses on May 24th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. May 25th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And May 26th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
I make a motion, you will approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion?
Uh, yes, just briefly, um, they, they're very much aware of what they need to do, you know, in terms of, uh, noise and, uh, you know, also, uh, I mean, this year was quite interesting. They, uh, made reference because they have livestock, uh, that they have to contact DEM. I don't know if they had to do that in the past. Did you, Fernando?
No, I don't think so. I don't with, uh, we, we do, uh, speak to the, uh, animal control and sometimes she goes there and she says.
Good. Okay.
I believe that was in last year's recommendation to, and they, they did comply with the DEM, yeah.
Super.
You're gonna be busy three weeks in a row.
I know.
Yeah. Looking forward to it.
Any others, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D seven. This is Rosa Pivas, St. Elizabeth's Church, Santo Cristo Committee. This is a request for one day dancing and entertainment licenses on May 31st, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. June 1st, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. And June 2nd, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM.
Seems like the Rosa show.
Yes. I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion?
Yeah, just very briefly, uh, it is busy. Um, three weekends in a row. Uh, are you all gonna take a vacation after that? After cooking all of, oh, that's awesome. Now, but look forward to it. If all goes well. And, uh, it's always enjoyable to go there and appreciate all the effort, the volunteers that put in the time to make this happen. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
The next item on the agenda is D eight. This is George Berman, Second Wind Foundation. This is a request for dancing and entertainment license at the Maritime Center Building for a benefit folk concert on May 4th, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's also a C, um, F four item.
Could we also get a motion to move F four forward so we can just kind of put these, include the discussion?
So move.
Second.
So a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to move F four forward to underneath here, D eight. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. George, if you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, George Berman, 66 Highland Road, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Perfect.
And I'd like to thank you all. This is, uh, very kind and very encouraging. Um, I especially appreciate the efforts of Melissa to make sure we're all in order. And the harbor master to make sure we're able to do this. And the town council, because really you guys encouraged us and hopefully this will be the first of many. So we're, uh, we're very pleased and, um, I just want to make one request, if I may, uh, in addition, is I've been in contact with Joe Mulligan, who's the director of planning the city of Providence. And he, um, sort of recommended that, um, we talk about the Sea Streak and getting it here. He'd like to see it, of course, on a more regular basis. We'd love to have it available for that weekend of May 4th and 5th. Um, bringing people from Providence, especially considering how bad the traffic is and the difficulty at the bridge. So we think that that would be a real asset. Now, I've spoken with Joe. I haven't spoken with people at Sea Streak or the transportation people. And we hope that maybe, um, Diane or people here could get in touch and make sure that happens if there's any possibility. Um, it may just take a little, um, discussion with Joe. I'm not sure. Um, second item, um, we're gonna have people filming and recording this event. It's the first concert, um, of its kind that I know of at the harbor. And, um, we'd like to have a record of it for our own purposes. And that will happen somewhere in the afternoon between three and four o'clock. I've got a professional video company coming down and they're gonna do something pretty good, I hope. And, uh, so that's the next item. And, um, we also want to thank, uh, the police department for their participation. Cause you know, if people don't like the music, I'm gonna send them to you. We can't, uh, this is the first time we've done this. We don't expect any trouble. We don't expect any problems. But I really would feel comfortable having somebody there in uniform to make sure there's no trouble. So that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with anybody rushing the stage.
Well, Taylor, unfortunately Taylor declined.
Right.
I was hoping, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's this council's plan?
I make a motion, do we, do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any other discussion?
Yes, Josh, thank you for taking the initiative, you know, um, to start this. And certainly it takes always quite a bit of work, organization and all. So thank you.
My pleasure, Tony. My wife and I have, uh, approaching retirement. I'm retired now. Emeritus, they, they call me. So, you know, it's better than the other things they call me. So I have more time to do this. Thank you, Tony.
And so worthy cause, George, to, uh, raise some money for the left. So I think it's, you know, gonna be a fantastic advantage for a good reason. So excellent.
Any other discussion?
Uh, yes, Director Perala makes a point of, uh, you, you need to make coordination arrangements for recycling and trash, right? In the area. So please be cognizant of that. Okay? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This word F four.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna read F four so we can make the motion on the F four. So F four is George Berman, Second Wind Foundation. This is the request to sell and serve alcoholic beverages at the Maritime Center for the benefit folk concert and the barbecue on May 4th, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Recommendations? Do we need?
Motion, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve based on all recommendations. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck, George.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E one. And this is Jennifer Medina from Havallo Boob LLC, doing business as peace going to Keala Bistro. And this is a six month review.
Is she here? Maya, I don't see her.
She's not here.
Chief, any issues to be aware of? Thank you for being that concise, sir.
Make a motion to approve, uh, based on the positive recommendations. I was reading the recommendations, had no issues. So we're good. And the chief validated that. So.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two. This is the tattoo license renewals from 2024 to 2025.
Please, somebody say something.
Halsey, you gotta mention Halsey.
To remind everybody, every year this comes up and we always talk about Halsey because he was so vehemently against tattoo pollers, tattoos, anything that was or resembled a tattoo, any discussion about a tattoo.
No, I know.
And we all get kind of a giggle out of it every time it comes around.
We do. That's the first thing you remember, you know, reading through this and you go, oh, there's.
I know.
Halsey jumping at you. I make a motion that we approve it based on the recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. We know the people that he'll give the hardest time to. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E three. This is the cesspool license renewals, 2024, 2025.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, we better prove it because there's one that we now down to two only. And, uh, these folks in great need many times.
Very important.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E four. This is Alicia Saldana from Colley 34, Gooding Avenue. And this is a six month review and the request for the class BV liquor license. And Alicia is here today.
Counsel? Uh, sorry, chief.
Chief.
I know you were very verbose on the last one. Could you? Could you be a little bit more succinct to this time? Any issues on this? Outstanding.
Make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Alicia, did you want to share anything?
Don't really.
How's it going?
Yeah.
Uh, catching up little by little, but, um, classes are being, doing good, cooking classes.
Outstanding.
Good.
Yeah, been doing good.
Outstanding.
Very good.
We're getting good reports.
Congratulations.
Good.
And the motion would include to refer to the solicitor to draft the ordinance to include the class BV license and call for public hearing on April 7th.
That's exactly the motion I heard.
That, that, that is so nice. I, I could hear myself.
That was my second, yeah. Exactly, yeah. That's fair. But I heard Tony. That was great.
I didn't even see your mouth. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F one. This is Juan Maderas, 577 Wood Street. This is in regards to a modification of the accessible parking designation. Second reading.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approves. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F two. This is the Bristol Merchant Association. This is a request for approval of the event schedule for 2024.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is F three. This is the resolution for the Bristol Fourth of July Celebration 2024. I just want to note that we love the Fourth of July so much that we put it on here twice. So it's on F three and I, um, two. So if we can pull forward I two and make them combined, it's the exact same item.
Why don't we just make a motion to combine as stated?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now we just need a motion.
Motion to accept the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Yes, we do love Fourth of July though.
The next item on the agenda is F five. This is the Bristol Police Department. This is an invitation to the council for, and for council support for the second annual Battle of the Badges charity football game scheduled for June 6th, 2024, that starts at 6:00 PM.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Controlman Brandon Coria, Bristol PD.
Good to see you.
Uh, June 6th, we're gonna be having the second annual Battle of the Badges at Cold State Park at 6:00 PM. Uh, last year actually turned out to a larger, bigger event than we thought. The turnout was great. Uh, we had kids down there with signs. It was great.
Good.
And, um, hopefully to do this, continue to do this every year and just looking for council support. And hopefully can match last year's donation. What did we do last year? I asked for 500. You guys gave a thousand, so.
So we doubled it last year.
Yes.
Yes.
And you're asking for a thousand this year?
Yes.
So we're gonna do 1,500?
You're not doubling it, Tony, are you?
No, not doubling, but I'll shoot for the, break it in half. I saw a chief going like this. Uh, something wrong with your hand, chief?
No, I, I wanted Officer Coria to give you the amount of money that was raised for children's charities in youth sports, uh, for the town of Bristol. Yep. So last year my goal was $10,000. We've raised just over a thousand dollars in each organization in Bristol. Uh, Little League, youth soccer, the summer camp, as well as, um, missed one other one. Uh, East Bay softball, each got a thou, a $2,000 each. And there was a little leftover to get me started with, um, this coming event.
Awesome. So you do need a 1,500 from us.
Sarah, could you refresh this council's memory on the balance in our contingency?
$6,200.
There you go. So I, so Tony made a motion for $1,250?
Uh, 1,500.
1,500. Now, what I won't do is 2,000 next year. We gotta keep it, you know, although we support you a lot.
It's pretty remarkable rate of growth, right?
Just say that we had a very long time that we took on this budget.
I, I did say that.
Well, there's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron to support, um, this year's, as stated, uh, from, uh, increasing it to $1,500. Although you didn't ask for that dollar figure that was proposed to you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Outstanding work.
Thank you. Wish you the best. Looking forward to it.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G one. This is the Board of Canvassers. This is one democratic term set to expire March 2030. And we have Fran O'Donnell with interest in reappointment and the recommendation from Eric Hasselhurst, the chairman of the Bristol Democratic Town Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint a friend.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary that we reappoint Fran O-, uh, O'Donnell, sorry, um, to the Board of Canvassers. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G two. This is the Bristol County Water Authority. And this is for one unexpired term set to expire February 2025. And we have Richard Fornier with interest in appointment.
Make a motion that we set an interview for the, uh, for Richard.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim that we set up interview. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item is Old Business. And this is for.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Um, you and I spoke a little bit earlier. I think this might be a couple of minute discussion. So, um, the, Madam Clerk, Melissa asked if we could move forward. I won. Um, so if we can get a motion to that effect, because that should be much better.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
So I, it's with great excitement that I introduce my appointment for the new deputy town clerk, who is Carla DiCosta, who is here. Uh, Carla is a lifelong resident of Bristol. She comes with, to us with much experience, over 25 combined years of an executive assistant. Worked in human resources. Uh, she's been a big part of the community. She's part of the Rockwell Parent Teacher Association. She's on the Fourth of July Committee. Um, one of the other things about Carla is that, um, her grandfather also served as one of the town clerks here from 1969 to 1984, I believe. And his portrait sits above her left shoulder. So he watches over her constantly. So with the council's approval and ratification, I ask that we, um, confirm her appointment as deputy. And if so, I'd like to swear.
Motion to confirm?
So moved.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Mary to confirm, as stated. Any discussion? I will. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Your grandfather was Lonnie Busbon?
Yes.
Oh, very cool. Yeah. Oh, wow. You've been my family. Long time clerk. Yeah, very cool.
Those eyes are watching you.
I know.
You know, be careful. Turn around, yeah.
They're like Mona Lisa, they follow.
If, if it's okay, her, uh, so her family is here. Her sister Joanna is here. Her wife Betsy's here. And her daughter Jessica is here, who's very excited.
You proud of your mom? We're proud of your mom.
Would it be okay if I swear in front of everybody?
Of course, yes, of course.
She loves attention.
Oh, yes, yes, of course, yes.
Speaking to the mic, Miss Clark. So.
Oh, wait, turn on, I'll turn on for you.
Hello. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the state of Rhode Island.
And the state of Rhode Island.
That I will in all respects.
And I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Exert.
Observe our provisions.
Exert the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the town of Bristol.
Of the town of Bristol.
Faithfully discharged.
And faithfully discharged.
Duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Deputy town clerk.
Of deputy town clerk.
Thank you so much.
So we had a motion and a second, all in favor? Too late now. Just like an after the fact thing, doesn't it?
Sorry. Thank you very much for that. Very exciting.
Congratulations.
So going back to each, uh, one.
Yes.
This is old business. This is the draft resolution in support of legislation amending the town of Bristol's real estate tax exemption for persons over the age of sixty five years to require that eligible property be owned and occupied by said person for a period of twenty years. This is continued from February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Michelle, you gave us some supporting documentation. Could you just high level speak on that before we start any conversation on our side?
Sure. I'm told this mic doesn't work very well, so I'll try and speak.
We can hear you. Yeah, we're okay.
So we, uh, I presented in the workshop how many seniors we have, uh, receiving an exemption currently. Um, and we did a, uh, we went through the list of, uh, senior residents and tried to figure out how long each of them have owned their home. So of one thousand eight hundred and eighty seniors, uh, that are receiving an exemption, the, uh, about one thousand three hundred have owned their home for more than twenty years. Um, we discussed increasing the, uh, elderly exemption amount, which we, uh, was approved earlier this evening. Um, we were able to do fifty dollars, um, per tier. The cost of that is ninety four thousand. So we then looked at, over the past five years, how many seniors have been added, uh, have applied for the exemption. And over the years, it's been twenty five to fifty seniors per year. This year for twenty twenty four, we've had one hundred and fifty new applicants. So we then discussed, you know, what we want to offer the seniors more. We want to be able to give them more of an exemption to help more, uh, give them more of a tax break. How, what can we do to, um, be able to help them more and, and not cost us a ton? Uh, so we looked at residency requirements, what other cities and towns do throughout the state. Um, we did present the, the twenty years, obviously, that would, that would allow the town to, uh, help seniors the most. Um, but I do have a list of, uh, how many seniors at which age, so, um, have owned the home for fifteen years, ten years, five years. I don't know how much you want me to go into that.
Michelle, I had a question in regard of, um.
No, I was gonna say, I think we have the, the, the figures, right? Email to us.
Go ahead.
As we age as a town, and we're gonna get more and more senior and it looking like the kids' population is dropping in town as well. Are we looking at what this is gonna potentially cost us year after year after year? And is it sustainable? And are we in this one?
Right, so.
Could you talk about that?
Uh, you know, we're, we're basically just using census data. What? The census is states stating in, over the next ten years, the population of seniors will grow about twenty percent. So, I mean, we're, we're seeing that now. We had, you know, twenty seven, um, senior applications last year versus over a hundred and fifty for this year. So as you said, how, how can we sustain this? How can we continue assisting the seniors without it costing us too much?
Right.
Um, so, uh, which is why we discuss the residency requirement. Having the residency, anybody who is currently receiving the exemption would stay on the exemption, uh, and the residency requirement would be, uh, anyone applying going forward. It will, I'm sure, take a few years to, to level out, um, but this would definitely help the town in the future.
Okay, there you go. I have one question, but go, go for it, Aaron.
No, no, go ahead.
I think for, for me, um, the twenty years, I can't really get on board with. Um, and the reason being is that, to me, as we all do, we love our seniors and we want to encourage more seniors to come to town. They're, they volunteer. They're here, they spend money in their, uh, our economy. Um, so my thinking is if we go switch to more of an income base on this and really target what we're trying to target, and my understanding of this is that we want to really help seniors that are, that need the help. Those millionaires that live in town or, you know, those, you know, very wealthy areas, they're, I mean, does it really help them? Probably not. Does this actually, uh, if we do an income area? And, um, and I think my other colleagues have mentioned this. I know Councilman Lee, I think Mary was talking about a mean study. They've also, they talked, touched on this last time that maybe we would actually be able to really target those seniors that actually need it, those, you know, those ones that are really. So I was curious from your perspective, is the resident timeline, as far as twenty years, ten years? Would it be better to be looking at a more income level base senior exemption where it would really target those, uh, seniors that maybe made less than, I don't know, thirty five thousand dollars a year? And I'm just throwing that number out. I don't, you know what I mean? If you made that, less than that, you would get the higher exemption. But if you were, if you're way above that, you would just get your two hundred and fifty tax exemption. And I'm talking about the, you know, the higher ups like the millionaires, anything, or everybody's that's above very high earners, then we wouldn't need it. Point is, we would be really, really helping those people with the higher tax exemption that need it.
I certainly, I, during the workshop on the exemptions, I had presented, um, census data on how many seniors we have in town receiving, um, uh, income at certain levels. So that's something that we can certainly discuss, but it, it is a little bit more involved. So if we wanted to give an exemption, um, which we just up to three hundred dollars per individual, if we wanted to continue doing that and then add an additional exemption for seniors that have lower income, um, I think that would be a separate ordinance, I.
I think, uh, I think, I mean, I can see that, you know, and it's a lot of work to be able to get all that, um, information in for people. I can, I can sort of see something, it being explored more and in more detail. I do think that either, either way, you need a residency component to it because you don't, like, the point is to keep people here that are already here and not just because the property is spiraling out of control for a lot of people, I mean, that have lived here. So even when you say thirty five thousand, you know, when Tim mentions that, I mean, that is, even people probably making sixty or seventy if you're by yourself and in retirement, you know, to keep a, a property that is now gonna be taxed at maybe ten thousand dollars is.
Councilwoman Prell, I was just kind of hypothetically throwing that number, and I just want for the record to be clear that I haven't, there's been no real concrete thought around that.
Right, right, right.
Just, okay.
Saying, like, I think we have to be careful with that because we don't want, you know, we, we can't just have everyone who moves here. We said that there's like a new senior population, like a lot of retired people are moving here. And it's not, as you know, I've said it at the workshop and other places, I don't really think this is enough of it, of an exemption, but I, I know the cost and I know the work you've put into it. So it's, it's a start. But I really think that the, um, exemption of people who like, you know, people like when I started, well, any of us, well, I don't want to say any of you because a lot of you, some of you are really young, but when a lot of us started our first jobs, we were making maybe a hundred fifty dollars, you know, we weren't making a lot of money. And now kids coming out of college are making seventy, eighty, a hundred thousand, you know, in some jobs. So you know, the people that you have who've lived here for generations or for a very long time are not making that kind of money or have that much, that much in their, you know, portfolio, so to speak, maybe, I don't know. So, I mean, when you say like, you know, when Tim's talking about maybe, yes, I agree, people who have, you know, two hundred thousand dollar pensions from the state because they were a judge before they went into the system, things like that, yeah, they probably shouldn't necessarily need to, to do this. But I think the important part of this is the only way we can keep it manageable is by putting a year, like a, like a longevity, like, you know, um, longevity on, on it. What, is that number twenty, is it the right number? I don't know. I think it's, I think it's a good start. I, I wouldn't do it less than, like in the documents that you sent us, some of these people do absolutely zero. I don't think that that is appropriate for Bristol at this point because of how, um, how many people are moving here. So I think, I think twenty is okay, um, as, as a start, but that's my thought of it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the sixty five in the twenty year, um, the twenty year period, uh, home occupied.
As proposed.
As proposed, yes.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, I have a few questions for Michelle. Michelle, uh, thank you so much for all the work that you put into this. It does not go unnoticed that you, there's a lot that's on your plate already, and now we're sitting here trying to make adjustments to our tax code. We really appreciate the information that, uh, you've brought to us. Um, I remember when we first started this discussion, we asked about what are, what, what's gonna be the goal of, uh, the tax classifications and the, and the tax exemptions and everything like that. And I think most of us agreed that affordability was one of the things that we were talking about. Uh, one of the things that we're very concerned about. A lot, some of us go campaigning, some of us knock on doors, some of us hear from voters. The number one thing that we heard in the last election cycle was affordability, affordability, affordability. In terms of the, um, we have two models here, right? We have the income, we have an income driven model that we could choose, or we have this, um, kind of a residency requirement model, or there could maybe be some combination of those if we really wanted to really figure, figure something out. But ultimately, like, my concern would be that if our ultimate goal is affordability, that the twenty year residency requirement on any kind of tax exemption that just gives us tax exemption to just about everybody, it's gonna cut out any of the lower income seniors that are living here that have, you know, only lived here for ten years or something like that, or maybe, maybe they've only lived here for five years, or maybe they've only lived here for two years. But ultimately, the, these might be lower income seniors that are struggling with affordability, or maybe there's been an accident, or maybe, you know, they're just not, they're not working anymore, right? Uh, and they're living on a fixed income. So we have the twenty year residency model, and then, uh, you know, the possibility of a income eligible model. I guess one of the questions I have for you, and you don't have to answer this right now, is are there any communities in Rhode Island that have an income eligible senior exemption where you have to make a certain, less than a certain amount of money to be eligible for, um, a senior tax exemption?
Yes, there are.
Okay. What that would do, like any community that's doing something like that, is now all of a sudden you're achieving that goal of affordability that we've been talking about. So you don't have the seniors that are making, have huge retirements, or they've come over here after making a lot of money in a place like New York or in New Jersey or something like that, and then they come over here and they have a huge nest egg, and there's no affordability issues for them or anything. And then, of course, maybe they're going to get a tax exemption, which they're qualified for under our current laws, and you can't, uh, blame anybody for doing anything like that. So, but it, I would like to know which municipalities are doing that. I, I'm also a little bit worried, and this might be coming from somebody who has not lived in Bristol forever, but, um, you know, for some people, I think that might come in and, and see that they're not eligible for a tax exemption because they haven't lived here for ten years or something like that. I know that we wouldn't be sending the wrong message to them. I know that's not our intent or anything like that, but I think something like that too can be misinterpreted, uh, by some folks, if something like that's in place. Uh, certainly, uh, one community in Rhode Island does it, North Kingstown. So I don't know if that's been their experience at all, you know, that there's been anything like that. But ultimately, um, I, I just want to throw that out there. That, that's really kind of some of the notes I have about this. Um, so I, I, I don't think I can support the twenty year residency requirement. I think, um, for me, I think any residency requirement might, I'd be off the table. I wouldn't be able to support it, so.
I did, uh, while you were talking, I looked up the income based exemptions. There are thirteen communities who have an income based senior exemption.
Okay.
Um, I do just also want to remind you that we have the hardship exemption. That is a base setting, uh, yeah, those seniors would qualify for.
Right, right. And then this would be above and beyond that. And, and one of the things that we could do is we could say, all right, well, this particular exemption isn't gonna be at the same level as our hardship exemption. It's gonna be like one hundred and ten percent of the federal poverty level or something like that. If you're living right around there, if you're living kind of in that space where you would be eligible for housing assistance or anything like that, this senior tax exemption is something that you would be eligible for. The other question I have, and I don't mean to take up all the oxygen in the room here, but it's another important question that I'm not sure if I asked yet, was, uh, the census data. Are we just looking at the raw numbers of this is what the senior population is growing, or is there, does that data get as granular that you can actually see that this is the number of seniors that are living in houses that are gonna grow?
Unfortunately, it's max specific.
Okay. It's, because there might be a little bit of a difference. We, we could experience a growth in the senior population of folks that are living in a Franklin Court or something like that, uh, who would not be eligible for the senior tax exemption versus seniors who live in properties who would be eligible. So the twenty percent might not necessarily translate. Uh, it might be a little bit of a blunt, uh, way of extrapolating what things will look like into the future, but it, it's, it's all we have to work with, right? So.
So in the census, um, if I remember correctly, I think it's age sixty plus, uh, who own their home in Bristol. So you're right, it is, the numbers are a little skewed. I, I did my best supplying it to the information we had.
Thank, thanks, Michelle. Good, good job. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, and I'm glad that we made reference because we passed two ordinances, uh, twenty twenty four, six, and twenty twenty four, seven. So, I mean, when we're concerned about the low income, um, you know, and hardships and exemptions, I think we've addressed that. We are addressing that already. You know, as to the twenty years, um, you know, uh, I've walked the Dome of Bristol when I campaign as well, covered ninety percent of it, and I can tell you, people, the people that must complain about are the folks that have lived here, that no longer can live here. That, uh, they inherited the houses from their families, and they're having a bit of a hard time in hardship. So it's more the folks that have been here way over twenty years, actually. I would even go with twenty five. That being said, but I, I, you know, the twenty, I, it's being proposed, and I'm in full agreement that the twenty really covers the basis for, for that.
Uh, I, I just have a quick question for Michelle. So i- if you do have a situation where we do have somebody that has inherited a home, and they maybe lived in Warren for all of their lives, but they've inherited a home here from a family member, uh, and then they moved here, would they be eligible under a twenty year residency requirement for that?
Michelle, I'm gonna answer that one. That is completely this council's call. So that would, we would tell you, this is what we want, we're passing that ordinance. So if we, as a council, decide we believe it's appropriate, then we can say yes, we can say no. So. So.
Well, as it was written, that's what I was wondering.
Sure. And Councilman Lay, do you mind just repeating that? What was that, that that they would be a resident, they were, they're resident Warren, they inherit a home and?
Yeah, it was just a, yeah, just a radical hypothetical, right? Where, yeah, let's say that somebody has family here in Bristol. Maybe they grew up in Bristol, maybe they moved back over to Warren, or maybe they lived in Warren their whole life. But they've inherited a home here in Bristol. Under that situation, what would something like that look like? And it sounds to me like we we have, we have some ways that we could write an ordinance to reflect that type of situation. It could get a little messy, I think, especially when you're dealing with family members and distant family members and and things like that. I don't know if anybody would really even be trying to game the system for three hundred dollars. And would it be even worth it for us to, I guess, write that kind of detail into something like that in the first place? But I think it was just, you know, a question I think that was worth raising.
I think that, I think that if I could just say my my thought about that, because I've thought about a lot of like other kind of scenarios that could come up. I think there's a lot of other potential things that could make it a little messy, but I don't think that's one of them. Because to me, that's pretty clear. You've never lived here or you lived here for a couple of years as a kid, you lived in another town, now you inherit a house here from grandma. No, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't get the residence requirement if you were of that age. But there are things, and I can't think of them all right now, but I thought of them when we had various discussions. There's things like people who pay taxes maybe for, but, you know, like, like the whole tenant, like, Brett, what do they call it? Like life.
Life estate.
Life estate, you know, what, and if it's in their name, not in their name, you know? I think there are things that are gonna come up that we're not gonna know the answer to until we try this. But I think there's a lot of potential things that could come up. But that would, one that was just suggested would not be one that, to me, that would be clear cut. I think there's a lot of ones that could, you know, might have to come back to the council and say, well, we've run into this, we've run into this. What do you guys want to do about that?
Right.
And, you know, but I don't know what they're all going to be until it actually happens.
We'll have to follow their timestamp of that person, have to follow that person. So if they were here for ten years, then they moved out west to California. I would assume if they wanted to come here and and age here and die here, that we, you know, that 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 clock would pick up, you know, that they were here ten years and it would pick up from there and then they would be eligible in another ten years if they make it. Right? I mean, it wouldn't reset, the clock wouldn't reset to zero because they moved away. That's my understanding. But I don't know, that's another, that's a, that would be another scenario, right? That we'd have to cross with, under the time model.
And all, going through all of the seniors and and looking at their title cards to to figure out their residency, to to put all of this together. I even came up with a few problems of my own that I just thought of while looking at their title cards. So there is definitely more discussion.
There's a lot to unpack here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just one other thing. If if North Kingstown does have experience with this, they might actually be, we're talking to, I know that you have a good list serve of tax assessors out there and everything. You know, they might, even if we run the scenario by them and just say, hey, look, this is kind of what we're thinking. They might, they might say, all right, here's some of the holes in your theory on this and everything like that, so.
Okay, so what's in front of this council this evening? What's in front of this council this evening is a request for a draft, is a draft resolution in support of legislation. So I'm, I know we all know this, but I'm just gonna say it for the record, that we can't do this by ourselves, right? We require state legislation. We need our legislators of the state to pass this law to allow us to be able to do what we're talking about right now. So that's what's on the table for tonight. Tim started the conversation in regards to possible consideration of income requirements. I think it's a very appropriate conversation to have as we talk about how we want to apply this. Other things that we're gonna, that are going to affect this is that this council asked for and got legislative change, which allows a three tiered system. I'm telling my colleagues something that they know, saying it more for the record and the public. That three tiered system, we're gonna have conversation on very shortly to have that system in place for next year's budget. Not this upcoming one that we just voted on, but the following. All of this is to say that what's in front of us this evening was a resolution to require a residency, well, a residency requirement. What is proposed here for this council is a twenty year, we had a motion and a second to go that way. For myself, I believe that a residency requirement is absolutely appropriate. I part ways with my colleague, Councilman Lay, in talking about new people coming in. I'm okay that they do not qualify for it. I don't mean that disrespectfully. You handled your words perfectly. I think you did a great job with it. But it's okay. When I start a new job, I do not get four weeks vacation. I have to put my time in, I have to put my effort in, and then I realize those benefits. This council has spoken many times about all of us, every single one of us, saying we want to take care of, assist the elderly of Bristol. We want to help. We're all on the same page. Great news. None of us disagree with that part of it. We're just talking about what is required on it. One of the things that has been said again and again and again, even this evening, is people need assistance staying in their homes. Staying in their homes doesn't mean you came here a couple of years ago. Now, let me be really clear on that. I didn't say you're not welcome. I didn't say you're not important. I'm not saying you're not a contributing member of the community. What I am saying is that if you've been here for twenty years, because that's what's being proposed here or more, is that you paid into it. Just like in my earlier example about the amount of time that you put in. If I'm at a job for six months and you've been there for twenty years, I do not expect to either A, make the same as you, B, get the same benefits as you. I think that's a realistic expectation. I think what's being proposed here is reasonable. I think that a lot of what was said here is reasonable. I would be happy to consider if we need to look at income requirements, but I'm gonna caution everybody. Income is, it's it's not because it's hard, but it is so difficult. And you can show that I make nothing, but I have a lot of money. And that is not fair. That is not what Tim is suggesting in any way. I want to be really clear. Tim's proposal is coming from a good place, which is if you need it more and you can show you need it more, let's give you more. I don't know how we can do that. I'm not saying it's not a good thing. I'm just saying I'm not sure how we put that into place. I'm also concerned that we would need four other Michelles to do that. And then all of a sudden, we're spending the money that we should be giving seniors and now doing all of that hard work. It's not a reason not to and look into it, so just to be clear. So if I'm not clear on this, I support residency requirement. I'm fine with twenty years. I think our count, this council has said we want to help people stay. Stay means you've been here. And if we're, if you've been here, I want to help you stay here. And when you've been here for twenty years, darn it, you're gonna get it just like everybody else and you deserve it. The other thing is that if you already have it, it's already been said, you're gonna keep it. Nobody's gonna take it away. If you've been here for two years and you're taking advantage of the senior discount, it's okay. Nobody's gonna take it away. It's only moving forward. Last thing, Michelle, you said one thousand eight hundred and eighty people are currently taking advantage of the senior discount. Thirteen hundred of them have been here twenty years. Man, is that enough. I think that speaks to all of what has been said here. My colleague spoke, I spoke, I think we've covered this. The the motion and the second on the floor is, do we support the resolution for twenty years? And that means that we would then go to our legislators and ask them to pass legislated, excuse me, legislation, ask, allowing us to do it. Sorry. Is there any other dialogue before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we have three, two. I said at seven o'clock that this council does an outstanding job disagreeing with each other. Nice job, everybody.
Well, the good thing, I think, is is that we had workshops on this, we've been talking about it for a long time. I think we all kind of know what our different views are on this and it's not like a big surprise.
And dialogue will continue, right? So.
I think that's the key point, that dialogue will continually address any issues that come forward, so we'll do.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one. And this is bid ten thirty eight for Wally School Plumbing. We had the bid opening today at eleven. We had one bid for the plumbing. That one was from Westway Construction in the amount of three hundred sixty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars.
Motion to refer to the town administrator and Department of Parks and Recs to act in the best interest of the town.
So move. A second, I should say.
By Tim, seconded by Tony, two, as stated, any discussion? It's worth always saying that because we only got one bid, we have the opportunity to negotiate with that one. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J two, and this is bid ten thirty nine. This is the Wally School Mechanical. And we had the bid opening today at twelve. We did receive one bid for that one, and that was from Temp Tech Mechanical LLC. And that was in the amount of five hundred ninety four thousand, eight hundred and twenty three.
I make a motion to refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
I'd just like to say I saw the lights on in Wally last night when I was coming home and it was really nice. It was great to see that building with a light on and it was really, it's gonna be great. Looking forward to it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J three. This is bid ten forty one. This is the Wally School Electrical. We had the bid opening today at three, we, I mean, at twelve, we received three bids. The first one was from East Bay Power LLC. That was in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty. The second one was from Kelly Electric LLC, in the amount of four hundred and five thousand. And the third one was from F and S Electric, Inc. And that was in the amount of three hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred.
I make a motion to refer to the town administrator and Director of Parks and Recs to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J four. This is bid ten forty one for the portable toilets for the two hundred and forty ninth Fourth of July Celebration. And we had the bid openings today at twelve.
I'm sorry, the first name of the bidder is the Throne Depot. It'll make me remember it if anything else. I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
That's okay. I'm gonna let you say it again. So we received first three bids. The first bid was from?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The Throne Depot.
And the way these were broken down, they broke, they break it down by the regular unit, accessible units and multipurpose units. So I'm just gonna give the per unit, per day, the per unit cost. And so the Throne Depot was in the amount of three hundred and eighty seven per unit. Hallman Septic and Portable Toilets LLC, that was in the amount of two hundred and seventy per unit. And the United Site Service Northeast, Inc., doing business at, oh, no, that's it. And that was in the amount of four hundred and ninety eight per unit.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator and the the Fourth of July Committee Chair to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated, discussion?
Those are some important points.
Mr. Administrator, do you have discussion?
We're doers, get it done.
I asked, I got what I deserved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's it.
No, we have one more.
We have one.
We have K one. This is one, Marisol, the chairman of the Bristol County Water Authority. This is the tri-town monthly report for February.
Make a motion, we're receiving file.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, receiving file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This council says good night and we will see you at the next meeting.
And Happy Easter.
And Happy Easter, thank you.
Feliz Pasqua.